Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight's Monday, June 14th of 2010. This evening, City Council is meeting in a series of committee meetings. We're going a little bit out of order since someone will need to speak to some items for our Finance Committee meeting that's not there yet. So we're jumping to our Environmental Committee. Committee Chair Alakwe Cosner.
Thank you. I have a couple items on the agenda tonight. The first is Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan for the county. We have a guest here, Lori Burchett, and she's going to present a little bit of information on the update to the county Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is, it's a plan that is updated every few years. I think this is a five-year update. Basically, it's to reduce the risk and to property and life in the event of a natural disaster in Athens, Athens County, or the region. So with that, Lori, go ahead and introduce yourself, and you have the floor.
Great, thank you. My name is Lori Burchett, and I'm with the Athens County Regional Planning Commission. And we are working up the five-year update on our Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan that was adopted almost five years ago. And when the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 was passed, it required that communities adopt a Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan to receive disaster funding. So it's important to do the required five-year update to continue to get funding in the event of a natural disaster. There are five aspects that are, that go into the Natural Hazard Plan, and hazard analysis is one of them. And we've put together a pie chart that shows the different hazards that are related to the city of Athens. And like most communities in Athens County, the number-one hazard is flooding. So you can see that on the pie chart. And the city of Athens is a little bit different than the other communities in that the next greatest risk is of ice storm and then flash flooding as follows that. And so step one is to do the hazard analysis, and this needs to be redone to identify certain hazards that may have done, happened in those past five years. And then the next portion of the plan is to do an asset identification. And this is done through the use of the auditor's data. And for the city of Athens, this is going to be probably the largest project in the city and villages that we're going to look at. And it's a large part of the project, and it needs to include all of the structures of the city. And so this, the Regional Planning Commission is going to work on identifying all those structures so that we can do the third part of the plan is the loss estimation. And that's to update what's currently in the plan and to, you know, get new structures that may have been built in the past five years onto the plan so that in the event of a disaster, all the structures are accounted for. And then we would also like to update our mitigation strategies and, several handouts. And we do have a current mitigation plan, strategies that are in place right now. And several of these have been accomplished by the city of Athens, and some of them may need continuing maintenance or continuing to work on the activity or tasks that goes along with it. And then others may need to be revisited, maybe they're not feasible or something like that. So, and then the fifth part of the mitigation plan is outreach efforts. And that goes along with while we're doing the rest of the plan is to have the continued community involvement in that. So we're going around to all of the villages and having public meetings and trying to get as much information out there to the community members as possible so we can get as much input in the, in the plan. So that's kind of where, what, what's going on with the previous plan, what's been done, and where we are in the process is we have been looking at the data that we have for updating the structures list and also for the loss estimation. And we've been meeting with the villages, and we have also compiled a public survey that we want to, we've tried to get as many people in the community involved in the public survey. And so I am going to pass it out to all of you so that we can hopefully get some more responses to the survey. It's trying to gauge what has happened with community members in the event of a natural hazard. Thank you so much.
Same here.
And then another aspect of the plan is to do a development and a trend analysis to look at what is going on with development, what's happened, what are the trends in the past five years, and how can this be updated? And this can be good development, bad development, that sort of, just anything that's happening and what kind of trends are going on with that. And the city of Athens has been particularly good at enforcing floodplain regulations, so we'd like to see that continued and to keep that updated. I heard that the city has applied for the Community Rating System, the CRS program, and that's a good step that we could want to add that into the update of the, of the plan as well. So, and then as part of the plan, Bob I. Berg and myself are trying to meet with all of the cities and villages to get an update on what's been accomplished as far as this, the objectives and activities and tasks. So to meet with maybe Public Works, the service directors, perhaps the mayor, to find out where we're at and where we need to go as far as the plan objectives. I think that that's pretty much where we're at right now. And I'd like members of the council to consider what, what's at risk for Athens County, what are the hazards that may have happened, and if anything comes to mind, to please let us know so that we can make sure that we have that updated in our plan. So I think that's.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to say that the biggest change that's occurring here is to have one consolidated plan. In the past, we had the city of Athens, we had the city of Nelsonville, the villages, Village Ames will have their own, and then the other villages were combined. And since we do all work together, we have many mutual aid efforts out there that it, that this is, the focus now is to bring it all in. And of course, there'll be specifics related to each area, too.
Good to know. Yeah, so I have the old Athens plan here from, it was last revised in October of 2005. So this will not be continued, it will be rolled into the county, to the county plan.
Correct, it'll be a multi-jurisdictional plan rather than individual.
Makes more sense that way.
Right, and this, the village of Amesville had updated, had been the first to put in their plan in 2004, and that's why we have the deadline that we do. So we're hoping to all be on the same page now, on the same timeline.
Great. Questions?
Are you, is there a mapping component to this, a GIS mapping component?
Yes, we're, we're hoping to work with, or we are working with GIS to have, we want, we would like to have the structures and the floodplain identified in the mapping process.
Are there going to be other risks identified, like let?
Slips.
Slipstone.
Yeah, slope. Also, not so much in the city of Athens, but there are some abandoned mine sites that will attribute to subsidence. And so we'd like to identify all of those sites as well. I believe in the comprehensive plan efforts through the county, they did do a lot of that mapping. I believe now it just needs to be updated to make sure we have accurate data.
And, and we, we've passed new floodplain regulations within the past seven months. So, and we are waiting for CRS certification, so.
So, you know, Councilmember Faulk, today we were informed by Paul Logue Planner that he spoke with FEMA and that in order to obtain the CRS rating, we're going to have another community assistance visit. So that has to occur because it hasn't occurred within 12 months.
Okay. We're anticipating.
Chris, just basic background information, it's my own, needing to educate myself, but, and you may have mentioned the expected completion date for the study, for the plan.
Well, we're hoping to have a final draft in place by November so that it can go out to FEMA and be adapted in January. And we'd like to give some cushion so that they can get back to us and we can make any changes that are required before the date is up. But the date will be January 2011 that we would need to have it completed by.
And are we planning to list this survey questionnaire on our city website?
It's out electronically right now. It's been out for about a month, maybe two months.
Okay.
I filled it out through email, I think.
I think Chris is asking if we should put a link up on our website.
On the city website to encourage people.
We can do that, yeah, that's a good idea.
That'd be great.
Okay.
It's currently on the Athens Regional Planning Commission website.
Okay.
As well as copies, links to the other plans that are out there within the county.
Okay.
And there's regular meetings, Paul Logue's involved in it, I'm involved in it, Paul is as well.
Great. Is this something, once it's complete, that each town will have to approve individually? So, so we'll see it before council or?
Yes, you'd be the governing body that will adopt.
Great. So we'll look forward to seeing that after the summer, I suppose, the final form of it.
About your surveys.
And fill your surveys out.
Yeah, we have 55. Believe it.
Is there anything else on the Natural Hazard Mitigation? All right, well, thank you so much for coming and for the important work that you do on this.
Thank you.
Next on my agenda is an issue that didn't quite fit with any specific committee, so I decided to take it on and discuss it under Environment tonight. And this is the city's nondiscrimination policy. We have legislation that covers discrimination and prohibits it for, for a number of reasons, but it's not quite as complete as it can be. So I met with a committee of Athens city residents about a week ago to discuss small things we can do to strengthen the city's nondiscrimination policy. And this covers, basically covers employment, housing, property sales, and property sales, hotel, hotel accommodations. And really, this is to get our city legislation in line with the values of Athens residents. We have a few people here, I'm not sure if any of them would like to speak to this tonight, but if you would, you're more than welcome to sit at the table here or stand at the podium, whatever you prefer.
Podium really works better for the camera and the television, if you would.
Podium, great. So please just introduce yourself and.
All right, my name is David Nichols, and I am a graduate student at Ohio University. I'm also a member of the LGBTA, which stands for Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Ally Committee to Move Athens Forward. And one of the issues that we wanted to discuss, or the issue that we wanted to discuss with City Council this evening was updating the nondiscrimination policy. And we have brought information along, so.
Just going to separate enough, pass them around. If you'll get some answers.
Thank you. And I'll just go ahead and read this, and it's, "The Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Allies Committee to Move Athens Forward, which is comprised of city, citizens of the city of Athens, Ohio University, and Athens County, are asking that the phrase 'gender identity' or expression be added to the following city ordinances: 3.07.62, which is unlawful discriminatory practices; 3.07.63, posting of notices; 3.07.65, purpose of the Community Relations Commission. We further ask that the following definition be added to City Ordinance 3.07.61, Community Relations Committee. Gender identity or expression means having or being perceived as having a gender identity, expression, appearance, or behavior, whether or not that gender identity, expression, appearance, or behavior is different from that traditionally associated with the sex assigned to that individual at birth. The city of Athens is a cornucopia of diversity, and the city has proven its willingness and commitment to embrace this diversity. Athens City Council added sexual orientation to the above-mentioned policies long before many other cities in the state of Ohio. While that was much, while that was more, sorry, while that was more much appreciated, it did not cover the transgender and gender variant members of the LGBT community. We are asking you to continue to set the standard of being a pro, of being proactive and creating a welcoming community by adding the phrase 'gender identity' or expression to the above-mentioned policies. We are confident that as the elected leaders, you understand the importance of this action that ensures equality, inclusion, and protection for all citizens and visitors of this diverse community. By adding gender identity or expression, Athens would be joining the likes of Akron, Bowling Green, Cincinnati, Cleveland, Columbus, Dayton, Oxford, Toledo, and Yellow Springs. It is our hope that additional cities around the state will see the progressive nature of Athens and take measures to institute the same protections in their cities. Members of the LGBTA Committee to Move Athens Forward are willing to provide any assistance to City Council to help with this and any other actions that moves Athens forward in terms of equality for LGBT and other minority people. We look forward to seeing, to seeking additional ways to make Athens more welcoming in the future. We appreciate your consideration and hope you will take swift action on this request." Also, what we have done is, one of the organizations that is assisting us, which is TransOhio, their legal representative has gone through and reworded the current ordinances so you can see what it would look like with the addition of gender identity or expression and the definition in each specific ordinance.
Thank you very much. I, I think fundamentally, this is about making sure that everyone in the city is treated fairly and equally, no matter who they are. And it's definitely, I think this is definitely something that we should take up. Mickey, would you care to?
Well, I guess the only thing that I would add is that a few years ago, Equality Ohio was here, and actually represented here again tonight, as well as TransOhio and the P-Flag, local P-Flag chapter. And it took many years to get sexual orientation added to, to this particular ordinance. And over the course of the time, from starting that process to when it finally was approved, gender identity and expression came along as well, and, and we start to understand more, more about the needs of the entire LGBT, making sure we include T, community. So really, what this would do is follow up the good work that Council did not all that long ago and, and bring it up to date and make it more inclusive.
Great. Are there any comments or questions?
I have a question. Would you be adding gender identity or, or expression and keeping sexual orientation?
Yes, yes, you would. They're actually two separate things. Each, each person, quite honestly, has a sexual orientation and the gender identity or expression, so that they are, they are separate. And often, they get confused because we, we talk about the LGBT community as one large community, but there's a couple of different issues going on. But many of them have to do with gender and gender presentation and perceptions of that. And that's why the protections are needed.
If I remember, you're still part of the Community Relations Commission?
I am not. I was the chair of that for a while and on it for a while, but not, no longer.
Have you passed us by them and looked at it, or?
I know that John Schmieding has, has followed up via email, but we've not, we've not had long discussions. To me, it's, it's something that just really makes sense to do, so we thought we'd start here.
Sounds good.
Great. Any other comments? Anyone else wishing to speak? Oh, Phil.
I was here in 97, as were you, Mayor, when we passed this, and people were lined up from there, out the door, to speak to it. It'll be interesting to see what happens this time around. I don't anticipate having what we did then. We had.
We can organize that if you'd like to see it.
It was the other side, Nikki, that had people. It was ministers from Galveston.
Oh, the original, yeah, okay, yes.
It was ministers from Albany. It was, it was kind of interesting. I had a file on it that I stumbled into probably about six months ago, and I was leafing through it with all the hell and damnation that was going to come down on the city of Athens for passing equal rights for sexual orientation. It was really funny, I'd almost like to bring it out and wave it in the faces of a few of the people that starred here that night. In fact, our good mayor and political ally was not supportive, as I remember. You said it was not discussed in the campaign, so should not be dealt with without being discussed in a prior campaign, if you remember.
No, I don't remember. Quite possible.
I have the clippings. But anyway, when we did it back then, the only town on that list, I believe, was Yellow Springs. I'm kind of disappointed to see that there are that many people, that many different cities that are more progressive than Athens. I think we are getting more conservative all the time here. But, you know, that is a may, it'll be a fun debate to watch. Don't expect not to have opposition.
Well, I wouldn't necessarily.
Not to, let's see, what was the one thing? We had a judge that on this issue, when someone that was very assistive to the Democratic Party, that was probably the first gen transgendered person I ever met, was going through the process, and she applied for her name change. Once the judge found out why the name was changing, he absolutely refused to do it. So it's, it's interesting. We'll see what happens.
It's tough. And if folks would need more information, there are representatives from TransOhio here who could definitely talk to you about that. And we've got email addresses on this copy, and we'll give this to the clerk so that you'll have that pass on forward on to everyone.
Great, well, thank you. And thanks for the historical perspective on the previous work.
Yeah, I'm providing more and more historical.
But feel free to get feedback to me, to City Council, and this will be discussed again shortly, so.
Okay. Shall we, do you think that we should have some folks here at the next meeting?
We'll see what kind of feedback I get, and I'll be in touch.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Last item on my agenda is miscellaneous. I don't have anything under miscellaneous tonight. Does anyone else have anything that needs to be addressed? Okay, my community's.
Shall we move back? Yeah. Happy head auditor. We, we skipped finance and personnel because we had several miscellaneous issues, some of which you, I was hoping you would bring forward. One of the ones we wanted to talk about was, we, in the Recreation Community Center, Recreation slash Community Center area, we have two directors, co-directors maybe, and one director was set to be paid from the Recreation Fund, one was set to be paid from the Community Center Fund. It appears as though both of them are currently being paid out of RecRee.
Actually, they were both budgeted in one fund.
Okay.
But the one is being paid out of the correct fund. But the money wasn't put in the budget, so they're going to run short at the end of the year if we don't appropriate the money, which is there to appropriate.
Okay, and the fund in which it needs to be appropriated is?
Is Recreation, 270.
Okay. And if you look at the most recent Unappropriate Balance Fund, you'll see that there's plenty of money to be appropriated in that fund, it just hasn't been appropriated in the correct area. So we just, that's one of those things we need to take care of next week. This is not something that we need to suspend and deal with immediately, but it is something we, the Auditor's Office wants to get cleared up, obviously, before the end of the year.
And we have two other personnel appropriations. One would be actually in council, in the General Fund, 25,000. I don't believe the interns, part-time people, were budgeted originally. And then in the Internal Service Fund, which pays for mechanics and the IT person, it looks like we need about 15,000 in there. So those three. We're just halfway through the year, looking at the personnel and where we are and whether we got everything in there that we needed or not.
City Council currently does not have classical intern positions, but we do have several of these people who work with us every week in the, in the production area are classed as interns, and so that pay, that money needs to be put into the fund to allow them to be paid.
You see them behind cameras simultaneously walking around in there.
Yeah, doing a heck of a job, as they say, yeah. And the IT person, we know Ron Forrest deals with a host of issues with regards to computers and, and all electronic stuff in the city. And that particular fund also needs some additional money appropriated. And auditor, am I correct that none of these needs suspension?
Correct.
At least for a few. Okay. We will bring those forward on Monday, though. Any questions about those three miscellaneous? They're all personnel-related.
On the safety services?
On the safety services.
Oh, wait a second.
Unless we have something else to bring up.
Oh, miscellaneous.
Okay. Miscellaneous goes up.
Can I do one more and then?
Go ahead.
I brought this up at our meeting last week, and Finance Committee said, "Go ahead," but I just wanted to let everybody know that I would be, like to bring forth a resolution, have Council bring forth a resolution, granting me authority to apply for a P-card or purchasing card through Chase Bank. I know some of you are familiar with these, they issue them at the university as part of your budget, and you have a money limit on there. As far as the city goes, we won't be handing out P-cards to people. We would have one in my office to be used for major purchases and even actually paying our workers' comp bill, although we already have paid that for this year, because the sooner we pay it, the more discount we get. But we will get money for using that. And I know that one other agency that I'm on the board for recently got several, and they are getting 10,000, no, yeah, $150 for every $10,000 they spend, or something like that. I guess I don't even remember anymore, but it just really, it's kind of a win-win situation. We're going to be spending the money anyway, and so we will get money back from Chase Bank if we do this. So I have a sample resolution, I don't know if anybody gave it to you yet, or?
Kathy, is the state auditor okay with this?
Pardon?
The state auditor is fine with this, or the, you know?
Attorney General?
Well, no, our auditors, there is no problem with this.
Yeah, no. Like I said, they're pretty widespread at the university level. Other nonprofit agencies use them, and it's, I don't know.
It's like a debit card. It's one thing about this, it makes part of the transaction stream, we have paperless. And I'm aware as a university has a P-card system, but they reined it in. The idea we'll only have one is much more reassuring than most of the universities, where occasionally they put too many out, and you have a whole series of problems with that. But the idea that really this enables us to actually, you know, move money around quicker in one sense, now going through the paperwork.
This discussion was actually begun when it was, when we got our first statement regarding workers' comp.
Workers' comp, yeah.
And as the auditor suggested, the sooner we pay that, the more discount we get on that. Luckily, we had the funds to pay that now, but we might not always be in that position. So this P-card would allow us to, to pay and get those discounts, which are also available in other large purchases. So it would be something held very close in the Auditor's Office, and.
How will we account for the benefit? I mean, let's, the money that accumulates, how will that be?
Well, my thought is, say, one of the things I'm looking at is using it for vehicle purchases. Whatever department purchases that vehicle out of their funds would get the rebate or whatever you want to call it back.
If it's used for other things besides workers' comp.
Yeah.
If you're asking a question, where would the refund come through for workers' comp? I guess it'd be delayed up.
Well, I'm.
Oh, that would be, yeah.
I'm saying, you know.
For workers' comp, that would be, we have that percentage all figured out anyway. So, yeah, it would go back into whatever department's paid for whatever we used it for.
Okay.
Is there a, this isn't like a credit card where there's a annual?
No, we're not allowed to do that.
Nothing?
Right, that's what I thought.
Nothing.
So if you pay something ahead of time, if the money's not there, how do we deal with that?
Well, we can't. The P-card is, the money is on there. We have to put the money on there.
So it's like a debit card?
It's like a gift card kind of thing. The money is there. So say we're going to purchase a vehicle. So, say we're gonna purchase a vehicle, council appropriates the money, it's in the fund, we put the money on the card, and then we use it to?
So instead of using a purchase order, you would just use the P-card?
Yeah, but we would have that paper trail also.
Okay.
Nothing is being eliminated, paper trail-wise.
No, no.
It would actually be backed up by the P-card paper trail. I mean, I assume that there's also a paper trail with the P-card.
Sure.
Mm-hmm, yeah. It's like getting a gift card to pay for something. You go to the bank, or you get a gift card and use that to pay for something, instead of just writing a check, or, and then, like I said, we get money back. It's just a way for the city to make some money on all the money we spend, is the way I look at it.
This is a resolution that'll come before council, but we'll discuss it more in...
Right, that, yeah. A sample resolution to give Debbie, and maybe when she edits it, as she usually has to do, for our purposes, you could send it out to everybody, and everybody could, you know, I think that would be a good idea.
Okay.
The sample one is just the one put out by the bank, which everybody uses, I guess.
Okay, so look for that in your email.
So, I think that's, if I can...
Okay, Service Safety Director?
I need money. In 2008, we closed out a FEMA-funded grant, I'm sorry, ARC-funded grant from Appalachian Regional Commission that was for the Columbus Road Pump Station, out there on Columbus Road. Closed it out, we've received notice that because we did not meet our, at the time, we anticipated $96,000 in our local share cost, they've recalculated the figures, 72% from ARC, the rest has got to be the city. Bottom lining, $8,488 is what they want returned from the project. Mind you, this was a $337,000 project, but that's how fast those wheels turn. I would need that as an additional appropriation, and that would have to come out of the Water Jeff Hill, those bids were opened, and we're a little short in money. We're asked, oh, you're gonna do that one, right, Chris? Or sorry?
You can go ahead and explain it now.
I think you have the better figures on that. So, Nature Works, I'm working with Kathy through this, the paving cost, that bid was open, it comes in at 37,728. If we have the budget at 40,000, which is indicating he may need up to 10,000 additional, so this would also come from the recreational fund in order to complete that project. That's where they're moving and putting in a real roller hockey, and also re-asphalting the basketball courts. And the biggest thing is the canoe access ramp. Again, this started back in 2008. Monies were appropriated in 2009, and here in, where I am in 2010, and I need full authorization for the project, including appropriation. Does that sum it up, Debbie?
That's it.
Okay. That one, I would like an emergency clause in. We're supposed to complete that.
When are we talking about?
28,000.
Recreation?
And again, that would be a recreational capital item. Kathy, and I, she's gonna look at this real closely and come back with some hard figures, but I would ask and request that we get the emergency suspension clauses and all that.
All the categories you talked about, there's ample money in them.
The ramp?
Yes.
It was talked about in 2008, but it was never, money was appropriated but never used?
In 2009, but they had a very long involved environmental assessment, and they messed from...
So the money was, and then, because now it's 2010?
There was no project number tied to it at the time.
Okay.
There is now.
Yeah. We were authorized to go after the grant, 03108. We appropriated the money in, oh, zero, oh, wait a second, 03108 was when we went for the grant. The deadline was April 1st, 2008. We actually appropriated 27,000 at the time, at 0, at, no, 9, January of 09, first, the first ordinance of that year. And then it just took a long time. I guess Army Corps of Engineer had to be involved, Army Corps of Engineers had to be involved, and just, it's been going here quite some time. It'll be a masterpiece, I'm sure.
There is a grant in progress?
Yes.
Do you remember how much?
It's 27 at that time, or it was 28 is what we requested.
It's Armaged.
It's a fully reimbursable. It's actually 100%, but until you expend it, and at this pace, and closing it out by the end of the year, we may not receive the reimbursement until next year. And then the only last thing I had was, I had talked about the renewal of the College Street Law, as it were, and you had asked for me to request. I have made that inquiry. What I've gotten back from Attorney Malika is what percentage would the city seeking, and he's willing to ask, but I did crunch some numbers. It costs us about $10,000, sometimes a little less, to operate that, but then we also, if you were to factor in the value of the parking spaces, pretty much break-even concept there. But I am running out of time, so I'll see what he comes back with, but then I will also need whatever clause that is, because it expires at the end of July, and we won't get the 30 days. We'll get the three readings then.
Thanks for looking into that.
A lot of miscellaneous, more than I even knew.
Are we done with your miscellaneous, Ms. Boosley?
We are, up until transportation comes in, but...
Well, that's very...
We're not done with our money needs.
Put on to Safety Services Committee, Senator Coon.
Rudy Leatherman here with us tonight. He is a combustion analysis expert. He currently is employed by COED, but he is a former HVAC contractor. It is his belief that UL carbon monoxide detectors, that their threshold per parts per million is too low, and he is not a fan of theirs. And he is going to give us a demonstration tonight. And by the way, he has indicated that he has no financial investment in the company.
Other than I purchased their products myself. It's my understanding that you all are considering carbon monoxide alarm warnings for Rattleton Town, and I'm just assuming that it will be, you will require a UL-approved carbon monoxide alarm. I would suggest that maybe that would be the minimum, and that if someone wanted to put in a carbon monoxide alarm that exceeded the minimum requirements, that that'd be allowable. It's pretty simple, and I've got a little demonstration. I've actually done this all over the country. In fact, my boys and I were in Austin, Texas about a month ago doing this. It's sort of interesting to be in my own backyard doing it. By the way, one of the issues I have with this, Sherry brought in her carbon monoxide alarms, one of which she suspects is about 10 years old. I have personal experience with this, because Consumer Reports rated this one number one. I purchased it in my own home.
That's the one I own. Sir, could we ask you to try to stay close to the microphone?
Oh, sure.
So everybody in the land can hear you.
The company that I worked for most recently, a company called Backerack Incorporated, they made combustion analyzers and carbon monoxide test instruments for the HVAC market. I was probably one of the very first, in fact, I'm sure, I was one of the very first contractors in the Athens area to do combustion carbon monoxide testing, starting in about 1986, 87. This one was rated number one, okay? One of the issues I have, and that has changed in the last provision, but one of the issues I have with a UL-approved carbon monoxide alarm is that they do not require any end-of-sensor life indication in the instrument. This one that's 10 years old, I can guarantee you, it does not work, okay? But if I hit the test button, it'll, all UL required at this moment, with the one you've got also, Mr. Byas, is that, is that it didn't require that it test the sensor, it just required that it tested the buzzer.
I'm gonna ask maybe that you should be on the podium, since you like to stand up.
That's okay. That's kinda neat, too.
I'm very troubled with cameras.
But he's been trying to get a bead on you for the past dialogue, and I realize you're very, pretty far away from the mic.
Okay. I'm just returning you.
Thing is, as a moving detector system.
Well, when I do presentations, I'm used to moving around. What a great thing. What I've got is a tank of 100 ppm CO, okay? We use these to calibrate test instruments. And what I'm gonna do is, I've got three carbon monoxide alarms that, if you look closely, they're virtually identical. The only difference is, these two are, have a UL sticker on the back. This one, which you can see, looks identical except for the name, does not have a UL sticker on the back. This one cannot be UL-approved. This is the only one I would allow in my own home. And I have two of them in my own home, okay? I'm gonna blow these up with 100 ppm CO. How long, if it was in your home, how long would you want it to wait before it went off?
Not long. Hour or hour and a half.
I've done this thousands of times. Kathy, bear with me for a second. This one also has a digital display on it, but UL does not require any degree of accuracy in digital displays. And I read a report one time on the performance and reliability of carbon monoxide alarms, and it said that the displays seemingly produce random numbers, was the comment in the report. Well, just set this on period, keep an eye on that one. Let me know if it ever does anything. Don't be too close to it. And we put Sherry's in that Ziploc bag and blew it up, what, at about 10 till 7 or so, and it hasn't done anything. This one, I've actually never been able to get to go off. The one nice thing about the newer CO alarms, or some CO alarms, is that they do have a provision in it. When you put the battery in it, the five years after you install that battery, it's gonna start blinking and say end-of-sensor life, or whatever. That is something I would think would be a good idea to include in any sort of CO alarm warnings that you put in. Here, they start going in the bag. This just amazes me every time I do it.
It is going in the bag.
It is going in the bag. Don't try this at home. I'm a trained professional.
Pull one open a window.
That's ironic, because in about 1989 or so, I got a home, this boiler room here in this building, I can't remember, I was trying to think what the City Safety Service Director's name was at that time, but there was a serious CO problem in the basement of this building, and it was sort of interesting, because what we finally ended up figuring out was, it wasn't coming from the boilers, it was coming from the fresh air intake every time a truck parked out in the alleyway. Automobile exhaust, 60% of the time that carbon monoxide alarms go off, it's due to automobile, automobile exhaust, okay? So I would suggest that you consider that homes in town, if they're, if they have an attached garage, even if it's an all-electric home, that it have a CO alarm. Now, this is the one that I would recommend, this is the one that's, okay, and already, it wasn't quick enough. Already, there's a reading display.
Does it go off?
It'll go off here.
So what was the parts per million?
Said 34.
And now it's up to 50. Okay, you can see that these are virtually identical alarms, okay?
All alike.
It's got the same parts and components in it. The difference is the software, the way this one's been programmed. Okay, the other thing I like about this one that would be an advantage to you all, is when I hit the test reset button, it tells me the highest reading since I cleared it last. It tells me how many days, hours, and minutes ago that we heard, and the duration, days, hours, and minutes. So if an emergency responder came up, they hit the button, it would tell them when it went off, basically, that if somebody was down the garage, or something like that, okay? And the reason that this one went off so quick, and those still haven't, is that in order to be UL-approved below 30 parts per million, they're prohibited from ever going off. Or displaying, it can't do anything below 30 parts per million, and that the regulation's a little tricky. It reads it had under 30 parts per million, it has to wait at least 30 days. Well, I always assumed that on day 31, it would start going off. No, it doesn't require that it goes off on day 31, it just requires that it wait at least 30 days, okay? So, the manufacturers typically make them so they never go off or display below 30 parts per million, okay? Then between 30 and 70 parts per million, they're allowed to display, but the UL doesn't require any degree of accuracy in the displays, so, you know, I'm not sure that that's that big a deal. But they're prohibited from ever alarming, okay? So that's basically the point I'm trying to get across. And all the components in all of these alarms are UL-approved, it's just those two are UL-listed because they're, you know, UL, UL-listing is kind of like the manufacturers get together and suggest what they have their equipment on a perform, and they come up with this listing. So again, I would argue that exceeding the UL-listing is something that would be considered. And if you look right on the box of this particular alarm, it says, "Warning: Individuals with medical problems may consider using warning devices which provide audible and visual signals for carbon monoxide concentrations under 30 parts per million." So right on the box of this manufacturer's, says, "If you have medical problems," and some of them even say, "If you've got elderly or young children in the home, you should get a CO alarm that has a display under 30 parts per million." And this one also, here's where it says, "End-of-life signal will be activated after five years of service for DC models." The other issue with, that I have with these type of alarms is, where are you gonna put it?
Yeah, down there.
Down there. Carbon monoxide is lighted in there, okay? So it's probably not gonna get there. Both of these alarms, my experience with this one was, that it's 120 volts with a 9-volt battery backup, the battery will last about eight hours. So in the event of a power outage, it's gonna last for about eight hours, is my experience, okay? The other issue that you need to consider, and I'd be more than happy to work with anybody on this, there are three types of sensors that manufacturers use in these, in these detectors. I would recommend an electrochemical sensor, those are the most accurate, the company that I worked for made test instruments, and I brought one tonight, okay? This is the full combustion analyzer that the company I worked for made. And the interesting thing is, when I first got to thinking about the UL-approved stuff, I looked on the back of this, you would think, would this have to be UL-approved? You would think so, it's not. So I don't really get on that, I don't quite understand what the concern about that is, but everybody, everybody that requires that CO alarms be put in, they automatically default to the UL-approved, that's what everybody seems to think, so. You know, when I first, this company I worked for was approached by the gentleman that owns the CO Experts alarms, and there is another low-level one that's out on the market. This one, I support personally, because it's made in Merka. In fact, it's made in Ohio, they make them up in Mentor, Ohio, and they're more expensive than most UL-approved CO alarms, which are primarily made offshore, but I think that, you know, they shouldn't be prohibited in this, in this particular situation. Ohio, you know, you all could sort of set a precedent here. Any questions?
Is there a way to see, is there a list of UL-approved components out there? I mean, if it's not UL-approved?
Well, I guess when I think about it, I'm not sure what the issue is with regards to UL-approved.
Doesn't it cost money to get things UL-approved?
Yeah, and this is a full combustion analyzer that is tremendously more accurate than any of these sensors, and there's no UL approval required for this type of instrumentation. I'm not sure, you know, my understanding is that UL has committees that get together and decide on sort of minimum performance standards, and that's how these regulations have come up. And my own personal opinion is that we're partially responsible for this of consumers, because what do we look for in a product? Price. I mean, these are much more expensive. My guess would be that if these were allowed in the city of Athens, very few landlords would be, would put them in, although I do know one landlord that bought a case of them or something, because he had a situation where he had some students get poisoned.
Do you know how expensive they are?
I don't know, they list for about 200 bucks, something like that.
Oh, they're 200 dollars?
Yeah, yeah, but that's the list price, you know? And he sells them direct. This fellow, fellow named George Kirch, if you wanted to go online, because I did come up with this, this information, I've learned this over the years, but COexperts.com is the website, there's a lot of information on the website. Man, if you wanted to talk to George, give him a call. Just get yourself a cup of coffee, because you're gonna be on the phone with him for a while. And he could explain, he could go in, he was on the committee, he was involved with a company called AIMS Safety, he's an engineer that used to make another low-level alarm that the company went out of business, yeah?
Could you come up with a list of things that you would look for?
Sure.
To put in for our discussion.
Sure.
I'd be happy to.
Here.
I'd point out that this is on its third meeting. I'd point out that this is on its third meeting next week.
Yes.
And you do have two sections in there that say, "Shall be UL-approved."
Yes, we do.
You're thinking about it, man?
So, well, I was, I was going to ask council what they would like to do. Would we like to perhaps put this on hold for a while, table it for a little while, and discuss it at another committee meeting, and not have our third reading?
Unless you can come up with requirements, I'm, we're trying fundamentally, think, how do you write the legislation to incorporate the things that you're...
Well, a lot of, like the state of Washington, for example. The state of Washington, for example, what they came up with was it just says, "Meets or exceeds the UL requirements." Okay?
So the UL could be our minimum?
Exactly. That's what it's, that's what it's designed to be, is the minimum standard. But I get frustrated, it would be like me telling my daughter who's going to U, "You gotta get a C. You can't get an A or a B. You gotta get a C."
So this could be our minimum, that it wouldn't be prohibited to have something better?
But how, the one that's not UL listed, how do we know that it's better? I mean, how is it...
Yeah.
Right, but...
I don't know that we can write the legislation to meet what we've learned tonight, is what I'm struggling with here.
I mean, is there a listing of...
Not that I'm aware of. You know, I would suggest...
That's the concern, is that...
Sure, I understand.
I mean, if you have UL-listed minimum, then that wouldn't qualify at all, because it's not UL-listed at all.
Because it exceeds the minimum standard. You started reading out at 17, if it was UL-approved, it couldn't...
But is there something that says that it exceeds? Is there a certification process these go through, or...
Not any more than any of the rest of them. I mean, UL-listed, all that means is that it meets these minimum standards that the manufacturers have gotten together with UL and come up with.
But apart from us as a city testing each individual brand, I mean, that's why the UL is kind of used, is because...
We don't, so we don't have to do it?
The one that is better is, it's for us to say, "Well, this one is better."
Oh, it's not...
There's nothing that says that it's, if it's not certified. Do you understand what I'm saying?
These aren't, none of these are certified. They're listed, which just means that they meet those UL standards, that they perform like UL says they will, which means they won't display or alarm below 30.
Right, but what keeps something that's not listed by UL, because they haven't gone through that process, being premier? You know, and it's, if we require, you know, it's, do you see what I'm saying?
I think what we would need to say, here's the minimum UL which warns at 30 parts per million, that is a minimum standard, and you could go more aggressively if you installed something that alarmed at 10 parts per million. So I think you need to write the legislation with regards to the...
Parts per million?
Particular, the, yeah.
The standards, the parts per million.
The level of C that you want to warn against, rather than recommending a certain...
Right, but if, if each individual brand is not certified to some degree, you only...
Yeah, but that's true, so...
I mean, how do we know that beyond you testing this particular brand? Does it say on its package what the minimum...
It says in the, in the instruction manual, it says, yeah.
Range, you mean?
The range, yeah.
Okay.
No, I'm not too sure. We don't write it as well as we can, and then really encourage every student to own their own, that they put in their own bedroom, that, you know, with, I think if I was sending a kid away to college this week, I think the going-away gift I'd send him with would be a really good carbon monoxide.
That's what I did.
Did you really? No.
We'd leave it in the car, I suppose.
Yeah, right. No, but I think any, any home that has an attached garage, whether it's all-electric or not, any home that has a gas-fired or oil-fired piece of heating equipment that's not direct vent, which means, it basically means it's vented with plastic pipe, basically. It has to be a high-efficiency unit. If it has metal pipe, metal vent pipe on it, then I think a CO alarm needs to be installed. If it's got a gas range, that's another time when a CO alarm needs to be installed. Gas ranges are just horrible. You know, according to the AGA, a vented appliance is allowed up to 400 ppm CO, whereas a gas range is allowed up to, you'd think it would be, what, lower? It's allowed up to 800 parts per million CO. And that standard was come up with in 1927, and we're still using it today.
I guess that's why they say, "Don't heat with your oven."
Well, and don't put a CO alarm in the kitchen, because...
It's gonna go off all the time.
It'll go off all the time. And we, I've got a couple of rentals in town, and we're switching them all over to high-efficiency direct-vent heating equipment. We're putting electric hot water tanks in, and electric stoves in. Just, you know, I'm not concerned about it. And I've put these in all, in fact, they've been in for years, because five years after you put the battery in, they'll start beeping occasionally, and it'll say end of sensor life in the display. And here in the past four or five months, it must have been about five years ago we put them in.
But this has nothing to do with rental properties, but you were showing me before the meeting, the little detector that you wear on your belt. If you, could you share that with us?
No, it's an electrochemical, is the proper term. For people in the, for city workers, this is one, and I don't represent these in any way. We just happened to run across one of these. They're about $150. They'll last for two years of continuous use. And if I do a little gag trick on this one, they seem to be, and there's a, there's a number of these on the market, but carbon monoxide, it's amazing, especially, I know there's a lot of people that are pretty, oh, they're not too worried about fumes from automobiles. And, you know, I've traveled around with CO, with CO test instruments in my vehicle quite a bit. And you can see, this is a little personal alarm.
It's 34. It's 34.
Yeah, you can actually set it so that it'll alarm at, it's got two alarm points. This one's set up for 25 and 50. And it's got a little, it's a fiber, it's like a cell phone. You know, so if you are concerned about it, I know several years ago, I can't remember how long it was been.
I was the acting mayor.
Oh, were you really? Okay.
And that happened.
Yeah.
Really, I'd like to see these on every city worker that would ever find themselves in any enclosed spaces.
Or even garage. I mean, I'm amazed when I'm going down the highway, and I get that whip of rich burning gas smell from the vehicle in front of me. Here, 150, 200 ppm.
Scary.
Yeah, it is.
But no.
I mean, if you're interested, we can go set up a special deal with the distributor over in Indiana, but I think they're selling them to you list for about $200, and we've got a deal set up, just so the friends that come in. And they've got a nice little clip on the back, so you clip it to your belt. They're both on the side here. So you can...
44, 45.
We've just been very impressed with how quickly that was...
Yep.
Gets your attention, I think. It's really annoying.
Are there any other questions?
Can you add on the wall?
Yeah, you could, you could.
The device you showed us tonight, the one that actually has the sensitive detection, that's battery-only?
Uh, yes.
So it's a yearly change?
Well, no, it's actually, actually what a lot of CO are manufactured into it, is coming out with a 10-year lithium battery. And since you've only got about five years for sensor, that 10-year lithium battery should more than take care of the life of that detector.
Our farm chief is not a fan of lithium batteries.
Okay. You didn't mention that, okay.
So...
Well, then, yeah, then if you put a regular battery in it, you'd have to change it out every year, just like, well, the smoke alarms in the city are now. Now, are you wanting to do this just for rentals, or is this for everybody?
This is just for rentals.
Okay, okay. I mean, a lot of places, a lot of states, the state of New York has CO alarm ordinance for every, you know, every, every house. And I think it would be definitely something to consider.
Why are we not?
Well, how do you enforce it?
I don't know that you can, but it's the law.
Rental properties are expected.
Yeah. On rental properties, we can enforce it. On the others, we probably can't, but let's say it anyway.
Yeah.
Well, it's, I mean, insurance helps to do, I mean, people get a reduction if they have CO2 and fire monitors, so...
Yeah, I actually would favor having it across the board. But I, I think, you know, the first step, I think the most vulnerable properties are probably rentals, because of the age of that housing stuff. So I think us taking that up now is probably the most important.
Yeah, sure, sure. I understand. And I'll make this offer, I mean, I'm always looking for new slides to put in with presentations. If you have any questions about your own heating systems, your own hot water tank, furnace, give me a call. I'd be more than happy to come by if I can bring my camera.
Are there any other questions? Well, thank you so much for coming.
Sure, thank you for the opportunity.
It's been very enlightening.
I'll pack up my boys.
And so we'll just sort of put our current ordinance on hold, and we'll discuss it a little bit at the next safety committee meeting.
What you can do is alter your language and move them in, that will take it back to first reading.
First reading, so we can have first reading.
And just keep it going.
Okay.
You know, there's nothing wrong with considering it a living document, letting it change a couple of times along the way. At least, we're not gonna get slowed down.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. Is there any miscellaneous for the safety? That's all for the safety committee meeting.
Transportation, Christine Paul, Christine Paul, Christine Nigley.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have five agenda items tonight.
All called miscellaneous.
All called miscellaneous, but I'll detail them for you. The first one is just a general announcement to let you know that Dump the Pump Day, a project that we've participated in for several years now, that Dump the Pump Day is June 17th, and we're encouraging people on that day to use other methods of transportation that don't require gasoline, or, or to use mass transit. And I believe that the mayor has authorized, or the city has authorized free bus fare on June 17th.
Is this me coming up?
Yep, Thursday. Think about it. Carpool, or ride the bus, or bicycle, or walk to work. Item number two, well, the next four items have to do with some additional monies that are needed for various projects that we have taking place this year. The first one being our 2010 street improvements. We realized that the costs are greater, and that we need to appropriate $28,000 additional, excuse me, we have 20, the Recreation Fund, 270, only has $28,000 in appropriated funds. So what we need to do is increase this by $12,000. That's Fund 270. So this would be amending ordinance O50-10, and we would need to suspend on that, or the amendment of that ordinance. The second one has to do with what Paula Heran Mosley mentioned earlier, which is the East Union Street Rehabilitation, which is the Jeff Hill Project. And this was, the original appropriation was $290,000, and that was appropriated in ordinance O0210. And we need additional funds to cover the cost of the construction and contingencies. The, the project as it stands now took, has money awarded to it from state issue one grant fund monies, water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, street rehab, several street rehab accounts. And we're recommending an increase to cover the contingency fees, an increase of $26,700. And this would be split among four accounts. Water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, street, street rehab, two different, and the street rehab, excuse me, street rehab funds. So I have the details of those actual fund account numbers. I can provide those for you for the ordinance. And once again, this is amending an ordinance for which we have already appropriated money, and we would need to suspend on this amendment. Next one is for...
Chris, can I ask you one quick question?
Sure.
The first item you were talking about, you said the Recreation Fund?
Part of our monies for the street rehab this year were taken from Recreation Funds.
This is, we kind of didn't coordinate well tonight, but that was part of this nature works that we're just working with the auditor on and locating how much money was placed in there. What he needs.
Okay.
It's where the pavement, pavement cost, the asphalt came in a lot.
This is for the nature works for the asphalt and asphalt court in the, we talked about that earlier, when we talked about finance.
But I thought I heard you say that there was only $28,000 in the amount? That's been, that's been appropriated.
Has been appropriated.
Got it, got it.
Stumbling on the wording.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is for the issue one grant, and what we are needing to do is each year we authorize the city to be able to apply for issue one grant funds for special projects for us, for street rehabilitation. And so this is part of our, an annual ordinance that we would like to submit to authorize the, the mayor to submit that application this year. And as we've discussed previously, this year's funds for the issue one grant will be focused on the improvements to North Court Street area. That will take place, I think hopefully, some of the work, at least initial inventory for that, that will take place this summer. And the last item has to do with the salt bin and needing an amendment for the legislation for this. The original ordinance was O1610. And what's happened with the work on the salt bin is the ground, so that there isn't runoff and leaching. And what's happened is that we realize that an additional, or we're realizing now that some of the costs for things like two feet of clay that needs to be underneath this concrete slab, and the work that needs to be done to excavate for that, and then also the placement of the clay is costing more money for us. So this has been the vast majority of the costs, or the additional costs. So what we need to do is increase the street appropriation by $50,000 to cover the additional costs for it. As I said, this would then help us prevent leaching of the runoff in the groundwater.
We need $50,000 in the water fund. We need an additional $100,000. I know that sounds like a major project. We have $150,000 that you appropriated. The original construction design, engineer estimate has come in at 268. The actual structure is kind of prefab, but as she indicated, it's the actual excavation in order to protect the aquifer and the outline. It's gonna be the higher cost. So $50,000 from street, and $50,000 from water. Is that right?
Yes, thank you for clarifying that.
You know, the, the money's there barely, but, you know, things like the street funds, when you get into the middle of what we're doing this summer, and we almost always seem to have to tap into a little bit more right at the last minute, and there's not gonna be a heck of a lot left.
We understand, and that'd be related to staff.
And I, I'm not complaining. I think you have to do it. You can't get in the middle of what you're doing here and not complete it either, but that's gonna be tight later on.
Yes, I think so.
I didn't realize the salt bin has been sitting there for a part two years, kind of, probably running in. You spent some time studying the drought and aquifer needs to get for it.
All noble goals.
And are there any other miscellaneous items for transportation?
I can't figure any.
Just an announcement, it's not bad. We got our money Friday, so it's time to order the buses.
Okay, great. Get the PO going.
How about that P? Yeah, there you go. Can we get that rush there?
Okay, thank you.
Is that everything?
That's it.
That's every item on our agenda. In no other business we stand adjourned.